Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 14 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. One piece of good news, you have until Monday to file your tax returns this year. You don't have to do it tomorrow. If you have cell phones, pagers, or other similar devices, if you would either silence those or turn them off right now, we would appreciate that. And if you are not the applicant and you are here to talk to us today about a case, sign up cards or sheets like this are on the table outside the chamber. And if you would complete one and hand it to our secretary, we'd be happy to hear you. Commissioners, first order of business is minutes from the March 24 meeting? Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes, and let's see whose lights are on and off now. We're good. Thank you. Russell, continuous request?
There are two items on the uncontested request list. Item 12 is PUD 1432, a request to continue until April the 28th. And then item 13, C6274, a request to continue until May the 12th.
Is there anyone here who came to talk to us today about items 12 or 13 on our agenda?
Move the uncontested continuance?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the uncontested continuance. Cast your votes, and those are approved. Do we have other continuous requests, Russell?
No new requests.
Are there any requests from the public today for continuance? In that case, we'll hear items in order. I do want to move item 10 before item 9. As I anticipate, there might be some discussion with item 9. So if that's agreeable, that's what we'll do.
There's one item on the consent docket today, which is an application to the Board of Adjustment for a variance to permit 26 neighborhood ID signs for Lakehurst neighborhood, Ward 8.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 1. Cast your votes, and it is approved.
Item 2 is S P U D 606, an application by Sergio Sabalas to rezon 3128, 3140 Northwest 38th Street, from the I-1 district to the S P U D 606, District Ward 2.
Is the applicant here? Not seeing the applicant. We'll move item 2 to the heel of the docket and go on to number 3.
Item 3 is A B C 736, an application by Sally LP for an A B C 2 overlaying PUD 1117 at 1615 South Mustang Road, Ward 3.
If you give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, Sam Corry. I live on 192nd 4021, northwest 192nd.
Thank you.
This is simply a Louis-type restaurant or like Buffalo Wild Wings, basically the same thing at the corner of 15th and Mustang Road.
Commissioners, no one has signed up? Any questions? Motion? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 3. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would also like to say, I want to thank Mr. Irwin. I've been in Oklahoma City 50 years, done a lot of zoning, built a lot here, and he's the first time I've ever had a planning commission member call me ahead of the meeting. I just wanted to commend him for that. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that.
Setting a new standard.
All right. A higher bar for everyone.
Item 4 is P V 079, an application by Willowbrook Investments to vacate the north 15 feet of Lot 1 Block 1, 21st Century Edition, north of Reno and west of South MacArthur.
Down in Beattie, 4800 North Lincoln Boulevard, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, representing Willowbrook Investments, LTD.
Commissioners? No approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 4. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 5 is C6277, a final plat of Saddle Creek Estates in Ward 3.
Steve Rollins Grubbs Consulting, 1819 South Morgan Road, representing the applicant Lee Construction, Saddle Creek Estates. We've gone through all the TEs and in agreement with all those, so if there are any other questions or comments, I'd be glad to address those.
Commissioners, no one has signed up? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 5. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6 is S P U D 607, application by Southeast Plaza LLC to rezon 4501, South I-35 Service Road, from I-2 district to S P U D 607, Ward 4.
Got caught up in traffic back there. I'm Ron Nguyen with Nguyen Engineering. I'm representing the applicant Russell Hunt, Jr., in this case, of, I guess, rezoning this property. It's a fairly simple project. We believe it's just an opportunity for the owner to rent that part of the facility to a church. Church is not allowed in I-2 district, but it would be allowed in this PUD that we're presenting, and we'd like to recommend approval if there's no...
Are you in agreement with the TEs, the technical violations?
Yes, we are.
Okay. No one signed up, Commissioners?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 6. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item 7 is PUD 1437, an application by Summit Point LLC to rezon 1002 Southwest 89th Street, from PUD 11168 to PUD 1437, Ward 5.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Brian Kuhn with Kuhn Engineering, representing the applicant. Now, there are two TEs on this. We agree with both of them. It's just pretty much to clean up some things that have happened after construction, so I'd show any questions if you have any.
Little extra story on the building or two?
Yeah, well, just one. Two buildings, one story.
I have a question, and the question is, how is it that the two buildings in the interior of the complex were mistakenly permitted and constructed for three stories?
Don't know. We don't know.
My understanding is that the person who came in and actually did the construction was not the original applicant, and that obviously it was something that got missed at the building permit stage as well, so bear that in mind.
But the permit was issued authorizing a three-story structure, Bryce?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Brian? It's there.
I understand this cleaning up for the three-story building and all that. Are there any other changes in the PUD? Is everything else consistent with the previous?
Everything else is consistent, but we have added a lot of additional landscaping, gave the city a chance to look at this again, and they made some comments, and that was one of them, and some things about dumpsters, consolidating some dumpster locations. There was another cleanup on some parking spaces. I think we were too short of what the regulations required, but there was more than what was needed by the unit count, so I think it cleaned up that. So minor things on that, but this was the big deal, was the three-story.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Brian, I can't go without weighing in a little bit on this, obviously, and this is all going to be off or not, but my preference would be that we would take the top story off and still get the landscape.
I understand.
Without displacing those residents currently living there, knowing that that's not going to happen, I am looking forward to the additional landscape. Having driven by there, seeing that probably 2/3 or better of the landscape existing is dead or dying, you know my feelings on this property.
Yes, sir.
So not happy with it. This is, there's nothing we can do about this except what you're trying to do, and with that, I'll move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 8 is, my mind...
It is item 8.
It is item 8. Lost track. Item 8 is C5712, which is an extension of the preliminary plat of Montecoray, located north of Hefner and west of Sooner, in Ward 7.
Is the applicant here? Well, we'll push that one to the heel and see if the applicant for 7 shows up with the applicant for number 2.
We are going to pull item 10 forward, which is A B C 737, an application by Timber Lodge LLC for an A B C 2 overlaying S P U D 570 at 13100 Colony Point Boulevard.
Hello, I'm Bobby Dennis, representing the Timber Lodge, putting the location in at 13,100 Colony Point, Suite 104105, currently under construction, applying for A B C 2, Level 4 Alcohol Steakhouse.
Okay, Commissioners, no one has signed up?
Mr. Chairman, this is an example of growth and someone moving a restaurant into the city. I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 10. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 9 is PUD 1435, an application by Continental Property Companies, Properties Company to rezon 2628 Northwest 150th Street, from PUD 1281 to PUD 1435, Ward 8.
Is the applicant present? If you give us your name and address, and then I'd like to make a comment before you start.
Sure, sure, no problem. My name's Sarah Johnson. I'm with Continental Properties. Our business address is W 134 N 8675 Executive Parkway, and that's in Menominee Falls, Wisconsin.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to take this in two parts. The first would be looking at whether we want to change or amend the PUD in terms of allowing a different use than is presently provided for the site. Then depending on the outcome of that, we'll talk about exactly what you want to build.
Sure, sure.
So if you would start with that for me.
Yeah, no problem. I have, and I apologize in advance, my presentation's going to be a little longer than the previous applicant's, but I have a little of the history and details on the existing PUD, so I understand a lot of folks with the Northern subdivision in the church came to speak, so I wanted to give everyone a brief overview of where we currently stand. So the PUD as it exists now allows, it's, the area we're looking in is located in West Development Zone 1, and the tract is currently limited in its uses to single-family office use and/or medical services. So we would be requesting a modification in the approved uses on the site. We're requesting a use modification for multifamily apartments and accessory uses. And just to give a quick look at the existing PUD and the units allowed, the current PUD caps non-single-family units to a total of 2,900 units maximum in the entire PUD, and that's split up by the following categories. The first is multifamily 2- to 3-story walk-up, which is capped at 300 units. The next item is duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhome, brownstone loft apartments, row house condominium and/or like product. That's capped at 1,300 units. And then the final definition for residential living is mixed use with residential loft apartments, townhouse condominium and/or like product, and that's kept at 1,600 units in size. I did speak with staff just prior to the meeting to clarify. What we're asking for on the overall site, it's a total of nine buildings, as you can see on the screen. Six of the nine buildings are a two-story townhouse product that fits the definition of townhouse within the existing PUD. So of the remaining buildings, we've got three of our three-story product totaling 104 units. There are 60 units still available within the existing PUD, so we would be requesting an additional 42 of the defined 2- to 3-story walk-up apartments.
Okay. Go back again and tell me what is currently permitted in the tract that you're...
Sure, sure. The current PUD on the West Development Zone 1, and that area encompasses more than just our site, we're taking a portion of that West Development Zone 1. It allows for single-family office use and/or medical services.
Commissioners, Nick, want to start?
Mr. Chairman, I understand Sarah's math. What I'm having difficulty with in this particular case is this PUD has been held up as kind of the poster child of how to do PUDs. It was a large PUD. A great deal of work and effort went into it with the applicant, with the stakeholders. We had the people on the east side, the west side, the north side, all very much involved. There were protracted negotiations, and we came down to a workable PUD that everyone could live with, and knowing full well it was a long-term project, wasn't going to be built overnight. Part of that process was we allowed in that PUD 300 apartment units. I like Continental's apartment layout here. I think it's a good layout. I think they can make some improvements on their building material, but we're not to that stage of the case. I like that. And had they been pushed in line to eat up these 300 allocated units, I would be all for this project. The problem is, they're second in line. There are already 240 apartments being built on this PUD. That uses up, in my mind, 240 of the capacity of 300. So you're saying, well, you know, our two-story is really more like something else, but to us, they're really like apartments, okay? So I'm, the way my math is working, we have 300 available. We've already used 240. We have 60 left, and they're proposing 234. Because of that, to me, it comes back to the very root of why we do PUDs and how we do them, and if we start carving this PUD up, I think it just underlies the entire process. I can't support this application in this form just because of that. There are, and we've had this discussion, but there's other R4-zoned land in the area. If Continental wants to build this project on some of that land, I will be first in line to cheerlead for it, but I can't support it for those reasons.
Any other comments? What I want to do next, after our comments here, is talk to the protesters about specifically this aspect of the application rather than what might be built.
I have to ditto what Nick Gales has said. You know, we worked hard on this thing. We worked with the people that were involved with it on both sides, and I'm not willing to change that. You know, again, if, you know, if we want to look at 60 units, I might take a look at that. That would conform with the present PUD, but I'm not willing to change that PUD because, like Nick said, it was kind of a poster child, and the process worked, and I think we ought to stick with it.
At the risk of repeating what Jim and Nick just said, if this was PUD 235 that had been sitting there for several years, nothing was done, it's an entirely different issue. It's not. This is all really fresh on our minds about how much time we invested in putting this thing together, and I thought, at the end of the day, it was a beautifully constructed piece of work, and I'm not ready to move it. It's too early, way too early, and I appreciate everything you've done, all the things that, you know, the layout, like Nick said, but I couldn't support this just for the reason that our PUD process has to be, has some integrity, and this would delete the integrity of that process.
Sarah, I'm going to call on anyone who has signed up who would like to address this particular part of the application, and I'm going to start with Bo Patterson. You give us your name and address for the record, and just address this aspect of our discussion.
Yes. Thank you, members of the commission. My name is Bo Patterson. I'm with McAfee and Taft Law Firm. I'm here today in representation of St. Elijah Orthodox Christian Church, which is just at 15,000 North May. That'll be the address for the record. And also with me here today is Father Deacon Ezra. I don't want to overstate the point, and you've already sort of alluded to the fact that in the mind of St. Elijah certainly, this comes down to uses that were approved through a very long process of discussion and consideration in part of this overall planned unit development that was sort of the first of its kind. It states as much in the confines of its text. It's, the way our math works out is that the residential uses that are permitted here, the single-family residential uses are limited under the PUD to six units per acre, so in this area that Sarah identifies, there would really only be 60 dwelling units maximum as opposed to the total number of units, which, as you've already pointed out, Commissioners, would exceed even the multi-use or multifamily limitations. This just comes down to, in our mind, the fact that uses were specifically identified for these sensitive edge restrictions in view of the fact that the overall goal was to have complementary uses for existing structures like St. Elijah's, like other single-family residential uses that were going on. And in view of wanting to have something complementary, restrictions were placed in these very specific designated sensitive edges, which would essentially be done away with if this PUD is approved, and would frankly clear the way for the doing away with piecemeal of other of the restrictions in the PUD in just exactly the way that you have identified a concern. So we stand opposed to this. It's not that St. Elijah is in any way opposed to multifamily housing. There are several areas within this PUD that absolutely call for that. This is a really nice-looking facility with some other changes that would need to be necessary in order to fit with inside the purview of the PUD, but as to the use issue which you want limited, this discussion limited to, it just doesn't fit. There's a reason these restrictions were put in place. The reasons for the restrictions haven't changed, although the restrictions themselves shouldn't change, and we stand opposed to the PUD on that basis. I'd also like to have Father Ezra add some comments.
Commissioners, I am Father Deacon Ezra, representing St. Elijah, 15,000 North May Avenue. We enjoy being good neighbors, and we take great pride in having been part of the discussions of your PUD 1281. We want to be partners with our neighbors and those around us and in the development of this entire area, and we are kind of startled at this question of whether or not we're going to keep with the plan that we'd all agreed upon. And so that's why we are here today, is to again state our affirmative endorsement of the existing work that's already been done, and the pride that all of us take in that, and therefore we object to any changes being made to it. Thank you.
Thank you. There are three more people signed up, and if you have something to add, I would ask you to come up. If your comments would echo what has been said by Commissioners or the first two speakers, I'd like to get back to the applicant. First is Ken Thiel. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did. Thank you. You're one of four in my lifetime who's done that. My name is Ken Thiele. I live at 2609 Northwest 153rd Street, right across the street, north of this proposed development. And I'm here today as the president of the Homeowners Association of the Gardens of Blue Quail Ridge. I have a whole long list of things I want to say. It's already been said by you, by the people from St. Elijah's. I did, though, want to say just one thing. My neighbors and I are concerned. We too feel that this was well crafted.
Okay, you can sit down. We've counted.
We too feel this was well crafted, enough so that we're here this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and please, I'm Niles or Mr. Jackson, I'm not Judge, not in my courtroom. If you were, you'd be in good stead. When I first saw this 1435, it reminded me of my favorite movie, Gone with the Wind. And remember the most famous scene in that movie? No, it's not the one when Carol Burnett comes down the stairs with the curtain rods on her. It's the last scene when Rhett Butler is with Scarlett O'Hara and says, frankly, my dear, I don't give a flip. And we went through this four years ago, almost to the month. This plan was submitted March 3 of '07, and after eight revisions, on March 24 of '07, it was finally approved. Now, it's not as if the developers are starved for areas to put their development in. This development is divided into six different subdevelopments. There is East 1 and 2, North, and West 1, 2, and 3. This one is going to go in West Number 1. Four of the six already have provisions in there for similar-type apartment buildings that they want to do. East 1 calls for duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhouses, brownstones, lofts, row houses, condominiums, and/or like product. North Zone has the same thing, but it mentions loft apartments. West 2 mentions the same thing. West 3 mentions the same thing, and West 4 even mentions townhouses. So at least four out of the six zones provide for this, and even a fifth zone provides for it. And I agree with the other speakers, there was, we negotiated long and hard for this four years ago, and there was simply no need to disrupt it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Stella Church, if I've got that right?
Sarah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, you're up. I'm going to echo Commissioner Gales' comments. I was very involved in the entire process of developing this PUD, and we took a long, long time to look at what would be permitted in the PUD, where it would be placed, how the different tracts would relate to one another, how pedestrian paths and traffic would flow, where open space would be. All of these things were given an awful lot of serious consideration, and we knew at the time that with a 230-acre PUD, more or less, that it was probably a 15- or 20-year build-out period. It was not something that was going to happen overnight. It was a very, very large undertaking, and I'm not inclined either to begin to carve up this PUD and begin to change what everyone believed they bargained with the developer for what they bargained with us as city staff and planning commissioners for. They're entitled to be able to rely on the work that they put into it, the work that we put into it, and what we and the city council approved. So I don't have a total headcount here, but I'm, along with Commissioner Gales and Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Bright, not inclined to want to consider changing the land use that's in tract number 1. If you want to build what that tract calls for, you have our blessing. If you want to build, as Commissioner Gales said, an R4 project nearby where you've got existing R4 zoning, happy to have you do it. But I really think that the integrity of the process, as Commissioner Bright said, is important, and I think it's very important to the people in this room here that we honor what we said we would do. Commissioners, are you, Sarah, you'd like to reply?
Yeah, well, I guess I just want to cap the conversation with a few things. First, I appreciate all the neighbors showing up and the church representative... First, I appreciate all the neighbors showing up and the church representatives. I just want to let everyone know once again, we didn't haphazardly choose the site. We've been in the market looking at sites, sites specifically zoned R4, for a good two years now. Came across this land with a seller. This is the tract the seller offered to get under contract with us. We did not pick a parcel of land knowing we wouldn't be able to complete it under the existing PUD for no reason. This is what was offered to us. And I just want to clarify a few additional things. I don't know how far it's going to get me, but just so everyone can hear it straight from the PUD. Nick had mentioned before with the cap of the 300 apartment units, it is actually 29. I understand there's different definitions of apartment within these approved uses, but in every one of the use categories, some form of apartment is allowed. So there are 2,900 potential apartments that could get built within the PUD in some form or another. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. And I also just wanted to quickly read through the definition of townhouse, which is what we're interpreting our two-story product to be. The PUD defines it as "three or more dwelling units attached to the side or sides, each unit of which has a separate outdoor entrance and is designed to be occupied and may be owned by one family." So of that definition, with our two-story direct access product, those would be considered townhomes under the existing definition.
Well, you may want to talk to Mr. Owsley about one of those other tracks then, but this one restricts you to R1 uses, and that was done intentionally in concert and discussion with the church and the other parties who border the west end of Mr. Owsley's tract.
Sure.
And, you know, I guess Mr. Owsley will understand from this discussion, too, that we want to see that PUD honored.
Sure. Well, again, I just, I wanted to say that I appreciate everyone's time. I appreciate all the neighbors and the church representatives coming out to voice your opinions. I would go into detail on the current plan as it's proposed, but I think you all are familiar just with the site plan on what we are proposing to do. So I'm here if you guys have any additional questions at this time on the specific plan. Otherwise, I think that's all I have to share.
Well, we would welcome your product where the zoning exists, certainly. Any other discussion, commissioners?
I just made a comment that I appreciate, Sarah, your willingness to stand up in front of all this opposition and make a really effective argument. You represent your company very well. Would like to have that on the record.
Action, motion? We have a motion and a second. For denial, cast your votes, and the rezoning is denied.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item 11 is next?
Wait a minute.
We'll let him clear the room.
Yep.
I don't get a chance to do this till next meeting. She was. What are you going to do? Let's do number two.
Are you here for item two? That's SPOD 606, application by Sergio Sabalos to rezone 3128, 3140, Northwest 38th Street from R1 to SPOD 606.
If you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Sergio Sabalos, Representative Sergio Stone, Service, 3140, Northwest 38.
Okay. And what you want to do is have an auto impound yard, is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioners' comments? No one has signed up?
I have quite a few comments. Even though this is in Janus' Ward, it's an area that I go by to go to Lowe's. It's on, I go up Drexel, and I know the neighborhood very well. Surrounding neighborhood is essentially a middle-class neighborhood. The houses still need to be fixed up. There's a lot of very well-maintained houses. And so when I went by this, it was R1. I mean, that's what it's zoned right now. The question is, is that how long have you conducted your business on this property? Did you put the fence up?
Yes, we did.
There is an eight-foot metal fence that apparently, according to the survey, encroaches on the property owners to the south. The fence is put up on somebody else's property. At least, that's what the survey says that's in our packet, that's to the south. The fence is huge, giant, obstructive. I mean, it's, you know, I don't like the fence at all. And then, when you talk about the lighting, I've got several issues. There's what I used to call a farm, a barnyard light, where there's great big lights on a long, big telephone pole. That's the lighting, the only thing that I saw, but everything else is enclosed by this eight-foot-high metal fence. It's unfortunate that, you know, you just went ahead and did that without coming in and having it rezoned before you started your business. The staff report, I think, also is an error. The staff report says only one use is authorized, and that's for automobile storage. You have a towing business, right? Well, there are two uses on the staff report. One is automotive equipment storage. Another one is automobile, automotive vehicle impound yard and damaged vehicle auction. I won't, I'll absolutely vote to deny this. If there's going to be any kind of auction activity, any kind of people come in to buy your cars, is that your business?
It don't have to be like that.
Well, then, can we delete that one use?
Yeah, we can delete that.
You know, the one use that says about auctions? So delete that. The other thing is on the south side, which is where houses are, you know, where your fence. I want the fence to be on the property line according to the survey. If you have to move the fence, put it on your own property.
Okay. I'm sorry. I guess I'm saying, the fence, it was there before, but my property line is south where the fence is right now.
Commissioner, I think the neighbors are actually encroaching on his property.
Yes.
Is it just the opposite?
Yeah.
So his fence line is within his property line by four feet or so.
So it's on his property?
Yeah.
Okay, then delete that for my objection, because I read them in the survey wrong. But the setback on the south side, the TE requires you to have a 10, is it 10-foot setback on the south side? I think it's 10 feet. Is that right? Is that right, JJ? Or do you remember? Oh, 10-foot buffer. You said there'll be no storage of autos or equipment within the 10-foot buffer.
Yes.
I think that that needs to be expanded to 20 feet, just to get the cars away from the neighbors. 10 feet isn't very far.
From the fence?
From the fence, 20 feet.
I can leave with that.
No cars.
Yeah.
Okay? And then are you in agreement with the planting of the trees around the perimeter and all that?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
And you know that they have to be irrigated, watered, you know? And then are you going to put a curb on the west side where you closed off that driveway?
Yes.
So there'll be a curb along there, and that's going to, so no options. All the parking is going to be inside, right?
Yes.
And so, and yet, that will all be on 38th Street?
Yes.
You come in off on that street?
Yes.
Then with the addition of a 20-foot buffer on the south side, and the agreement on the TEs, the planting of the trees, that sort of thing, I'll move to approve the application.
Okay. Now we have a motion and a second to approve item 2 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dan? Can you come up to the microphone, please? And give us your, pull the mic down and give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Marcella Phillips. I'm 3811 North Linda. I didn't sign up because I didn't think I'd have any questions, because I don't really object to this, but I just didn't understand what, are you talking about the trees? Because we're already encroaching on his property, so would the trees come back and, would the fence have to come down to put these trees in? There's no room for the trees.
Well, there's no, there's no tree line on that south boundary. It's just east, west, and north.
Okay. Okay, so there'll be no trees between us and the fence?
Correct.
It's just around the other side?
Right.
Okay. Okay, I guess that was my only question.
Thank you. And the applicant for item 8 is not here, so I guess we'll just kick it out to our first meeting in May.
So item 11 is the ordinance relating to historic preservation and historic landmark zone properties and districts amending Chapter 59 of the municipal code.
Susan is here to talk to that. Meanwhile, we'll take a motion to continue item 8.
Come on.
Second. Cast your votes, and it is continued.
Hi, good afternoon. Susan Miller with the Planning Department. And this item is really just several HP ordinance amendments that we're bringing forward. We talked about them in a previous Urban Development Committee. They can be summarized probably in three broad categories. One is reducing the number of HP commissioners on the commission, and there's some associated changes with that as far as what constitutes a quorum in the makeup of the commission to reflect that reduced number. Also, there's a couple of items included in the ordinance that expands administrative approval authority of the HP officer by allowing her to approve things, very minor things, typically at the building permit stage, when there's building code they had to meet and we didn't anticipate when the CA went through. And also clarifying the HP commission's role in the city's dilapidated structures process. There was, even though we were kind of operating in one way, the language could have been interpreted in another, and we really just needed to clarify that their role was really of a recommendation capacity rather than being able to make those final decisions. Also, I wanted to address, as far as the process and how this has been reviewed by neighborhoods, this has, went to the HP commission on March 2. And as you remember, in Urban Development Committee, we did have a, an additional piece regarding public nuisance that we've since removed. So we, based on that, we took it back to HP commission on April 6. But let me talk a second about the kind of notification that's provided to the HP neighborhoods prior to those points in time. We have about 35, a little over 35 contacts in the nine HP neighborhoods. If they have a preservation review committee, it's typically those, also some neighborhood association people, and just some people in the neighborhoods that have wanted to stay informed. So the mail-out day, which is typically the Thursday before the Wednesday meeting, they receive an email saying the packet's ready. They get the link to the website. There's a few neighborhoods that still receive paper copies, but, so I just wanted to kind of share that as far as the, how neighborhoods were informed of these changes.
Well, Susan, I'll comment on that. The feedback I've gotten from several neighborhoods is they're really not aware of this. And I'll, I use the word historically advisedly, as I did earlier. My experience when I was in an HP neighborhood before is when there were changes to the HP ordinance proposed, there were actually direct discussions with the HP neighborhoods, and they participated in those updates and amendments. And my sense is that isn't quite what happened here. And at least in a couple of neighborhoods that I'm aware of, they've told me they haven't, no one in the neighborhood in any leadership position is aware of this, so.
Okay, yeah, it's, we have quite a few contacts in each, and it's, of course, our hope that those are shared with the neighborhoods, through those people.
Well, I think maybe there needs to be active follow-up and make sure that there is some kind of discussion with each of the neighborhoods, because the people who live in these neighborhoods really care about this, a lot of them. And I think most of them simply are not aware that this is coming. So I think we need to think about that process.
Okay, we will. We'll have to talk with Catherine about that and see what we can do.
That would be.
Maybe we need to revisit even who our contacts are in the neighborhood.
I would suggest that as well. And they change, as you know.
Right.
So you wanted to add something, you wanted to add language, Susan, or delete language, as I recall?
I think the municipal councillor's office would like to delete the language in C. Just strike that.
Item LC?
LC.
That conflicts with the preceding paragraph?
Yes, we believe that that does, or could, has the potential.
Could.
Page 5.
At the very bottom. Item C.
This was to ensure that when the city council had declared property dilapidated, that the Historic Preservation Commission then could not come back in and deny the application for the CA, that the council had final authority.
Don't look at me, I'm not making a motion.
I'll make the motion. Well, I'll move approval of the ordinance with the deletion of paragraph C on page 5.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
I'm going to vote against that.
And it's approved. Sir?
I'm voting against that. I didn't get my switch turned quite fast enough.
Okay, it's.
And the reason I am.
You need five, then it's 4 to 2, so.
Because I like to clean up on the demolition stuff that I objected to before. That's fine. I'm very concerned now, comments you made, Mr. Chairman. This needs to be a collaborative effort and not a, well, we passed it, so you have to live by it, jam it down the people's throat. People are going to live by this ordinance, are going to be controlled by this ordinance. They need some input into it.
And I guess just a general comment, there's nothing that becomes more strict in this ordinance. The pieces that we're changing that actually would affect property owners are to make the process really easier and more streamlined by allowing Catherine to do things that otherwise would require to wait on committee approval and go through those hoops.
I'm not critical of what's proposed at all. I just, I mean, Nick really said it very well. I think that the people who are affected by this need more opportunity for participation and should be encouraged. I mean, we need to push the involvement button harder, I think.
And that's, I mean, this is something we struggle with all the time. We try to do. We try to do that outreach, you know, perhaps could have done, been more proactive in this respect, but a lot of times, we try to reach out, we don't hear, we don't have a lot of input, or it comes late in the process, so, but, you know, we do try. I just wanted to put that across. We're certainly not, by any means, intentionally trying to leave people out of the process.
That wasn't my point either.
No, I know, but.
It's not being critical, it's just, I don't think it happened maybe the way it should have. And it's not a criticism of anybody, but it's just something should maybe have occurred a little bit differently. I guess we take it up next meeting, Susan, when there are, I mean, it didn't pass today, but it's four to two, so it wasn't denied. It comes up again in two weeks, I guess, the beginning of May, and I think there's an opportunity between now and then to reach out.
Okay.
And if that, that being done, I'll be in support.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we go into the other part of the agenda, my motion on SPOD 606 to approve it, I think that I want to mention the 20-foot buffer, but also I want to reflect the fact that that one use of damaged vehicle auctions.
Is stricken, which the applicant agreed to.
Okay, I just want to make clear that that's also not part of, okay.
All right. Planning Commission committees, planning commission members, I have something I want to bring up. It's a case we didn't hear today. It's about extending a preliminary plat. And I think we talked a couple of weeks ago about whether existing subdivision regulations, ordinances, and policies could be applied, current, could be applied to extensions and renewals. I mean, things change a lot. We have something that's five years old, we're about to extend it for another five years, so it's very possible that not much is going to happen for the first nine and a half, or even almost 10 years from the point of original application. During that time, in this instance, we have established sidewalk requirements, certain landscaping around perimeters of subdivisions, open space requirements, and so forth. There are a number of things that we viewed as, you know, improvements to the community as it is built going forward. And in conversation with Susan, if we have an applicant who will agree when they ask for this extension to being willing to conform to the existing, the now-existing at the time of renewal, subdivision regulations, zoning regulations, i.e. landscaping and so forth, and our current policies like the open space requirements, an applicant could agree to that and we could renew it. If they didn't want to agree to that, we could deny it, in which case, they would come back in to apply for a new preliminary plat and, of course, be governed by exactly what we were asking them to do. The other possibility is to look at the subdivision regulations with the, with an eye toward renewing preliminary plats and having the subdivision regulations say that you will comply with the existing zoning subdivision regulations and policies in effect at the time you come in for permit or final plat. That would require us asking the staff to look into, you know, drafting some suggested language and subdivision regulations to provide for that. So I open that up for discussion to see what the rest of you think.
Well, that seems to be something that we should absolutely request. I think it makes all the sense in the world, because you can't grandfather in an application that's 10 years old and that everything that was existing 10 years ago, with all the work that we do on the commission, that they don't have to comply with. I think that the, you know, that we're drafting the subdivision regulations, provisions that, you know, that require that done, makes all the sense in the world. The issue of having an applicant agree if he wants an extension of his application or his plat, seems to me to be somewhat like, if he didn't, he's in a, he's in a rock and a hard place. You know, like, oh, you mean, you know, so if we deny the application based upon the fact that he didn't agree, I'm curious, Susan, you know, are there some, there may be some issues there?
Well, I don't, I don't think you're denying it because you didn't agree. It's just, it's time for it to be over, and it's, he's not finished or completed it yet, so you're going to get another one. You could simply just deny that, you have the right to do that, and then he has to come in anyway and comply with all the new regulations.
But would staff, before the application for extension came in, have that conversation with the applicant? That's where, I mean, I think that's where would, that's, that conversation would happen. We have all these new provisions. Will you agree to do that? And then you would just have that in your staff report that the applicant doesn't agree.
Any other comments or thoughts? Is that Nick?
I just have one very brief for the meeting.
Oh, I was going to do that.
Well, he gave me a little deal out of the bar journal where they recapped overly base, and I was just going to refer to one sentence in the, in court's ruling where it says, "The commission did exactly what it was required to do when it considered..."
And that synopsis was in the latest issue of the Bar Journal, and if anybody would like, well, actually, you can circulate a copy of this, just because it's easier to read.
I'd like to see it, because I'd like to know who the judges were on the panel.
What?
I'd like to see that, just so I could see who the judges were on the panel that reviewed our case.
That, that, well, anyway.
Susan, will you take our discussion as a request to consider looking at the subdivision regulations with respect to extending or renewing plats, preliminary plats? Planning Department, Russell?
Reminder, huh? May 3rd. Remind them, May 3rd, the joint workshop will be at the Community Foundation.
Do we have an agenda finalized yet for that?
We, I don't know if it's been published as such, but the three, the three, sorry? Well, the three items essentially are a discussion on policy development and the respective roles of the Plan Commission and the City Council. There will be an update on Plan OKC and the role of the comprehensive plan. And then the third item is basically a discussion on long-term growth trends and the fiscal considerations that are going along with that.
Can we get a copy of that agenda as soon as you've had that meeting with Couch, so we know what, know what we're looking at with plenty of advance notice?
Is it 8:30? I presume it's 8:30 in the morning?
Scheduled from 8:30 to 11:30 at the Community Foundation in their big conference room. Yeah, I can actually send you even just an email with the topics and some kind of general information before the agenda's finalized, if you want.
Will there be a staff workup on each of the subjects before we get together? Is that the plan, Russell? Or not on the policy one, but on the other two, or what's your?
Well, we have, we'll have PowerPoint, which basically are that summary. I don't know that we, I don't know that it's.
Well, that's why I'm really asking, is there a staff presentation with respect to these items?
There are staff presentations with each one. Two of them are relatively brief, and the fiscal considerations one, just because it's, there's a lot associated with it, is, would take longer.
So.
But that's subject again, again to the meeting with City Manager.
So it won't be like the last one where appearance corridors, the last subject wasn't worked up by the staff at all and just?
Well, we never know when someone's going to bring something up, we don't know.
Well, what happened last time is that it was on the agenda, and then Jim Couch just turned to me and said, "Okay, now talk about appearance corridors," but there'd been no staff work on that, and everything else.
Well, we've, we've done a lot of work on each one of these.
Okay, good. That's, that's my question.
All right.
Good. Nick, Nick's laughing.
And I won't be there at that meeting.
I know, sorry about that.
Well, okay, so.
The other thing for the 28th, the next Planning Commission meeting, there will be an Urban Development Committee, and there are three items on that. One are amendments to the preservation guidelines and standards for historic districts. Amendments to, these are minor amendments to chapter 59, the sort of cleanup language that we do on a periodic basis. And then the third one are amendments to the sign code regarding menu board advertising. Kind of like the Sonic boards more than anything.
Okay.
Drive-throughs.
Anything else, Planning Department? Development Services? Municipal councillor? No citizens to be heard? Any other business, commissioners? Motion to adjourn. We're adjourned, and Nick and I both agree, even though he's red.